Good evening, welcome to the November seventh meeting of the North End of School Committee. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, would you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the common good for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone, and thank you for coming out on a cold rainy night. Um, our first order of business is public comment. Is there any public comment from the audience tonight? Seeing none. Um, is there any public comment tonight? I just, just said it. There's, there's chants at the end. Okay. Okay, our first order is consent agenda. And in the packet is minutes, our minutes from our last meeting of October seventeenth. Do we have a motion?
It says presented in the packet for October seventeenth, twenty nineteen.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Mabley, any discussion? Here we go, in all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, the ayes have it four oh. And before I go any further, I just want to say that obviously, school community member Holly Lynch couldn't be here tonight. She apologized for her absence. Okay, um, next order of business is a donation from Peter Breen. Uh, any background on this, Dr. Gilligan? Looks like it's pretty self-explanatory here.
Yeah, I would just say that Pete has been dynamite and it's been many years, I think I wrote about it in one of the news levers or tweet. With hardly any fanfare, it doesn't look for any attention. Uh, and Pete Breen has been donating to most of our schools. Mulch. Not just one particular one. It's going, I mean, it's gone on forever. So, we're really appreciative of his efforts.
Yep, the entire Breen family's been very good to the town. If I recall correctly, I think Peter's daughter just got PTS last week.
She did.
That's right.
Lindsay Conling teaches for us over at the Atkinson School. She taught ten years in North Reading and we're thrilled to have her with us.
Great. Uh, so, we don't need actual motion for that? No, just acknowledgement, that's all that is? We don't need to accept that?
No, it's under a pound.
Acknowledged, so we acknowledged it. Duly, duly acknowledged, okay. Uh, student report, Jack Eamon and Mike is here tonight? Mika, welcome. We're wondering if you existed. We know these two guys, you want to start off by introducing yourself first to the, uh, the public?
I'm Mika, um, along with Eamon, I'm a junior at the high school.
Well, welcome, thanks for being here. Who's leading off tonight?
Uh, I will start.
Okay, fantastic.
So, it is playoff season and I have a lot of, uh, sports to get through. So, um, the field hockey team lost to Chelmsford in overtime last Friday, so their season's over. But they had a incredibly strong season. And volleyball, the girls volleyball team lost to Lawrence on Monday in a tough loss for them. But they also had an incredibly strong season and made it very far, farther than most thought they would. Uh, the cross-country boys and girls team both got second at the MVC league meet about two weeks ago. And they have their state meet this weekend. The girls swim team had the MVC meet this week. And some of their qualif-, some of their swimmers qualified for the state's meet, which is, I believe, next week, but I'm not positive. The girls soccer team beat PBD three nothing on Monday. And they'll be playing Westford, is that? Westford Academy tomorrow, uh, in a game that got postponed. And boys soccer team won yesterday one nothing against Bill Ricker on a penalty kick. And they will be advancing to face Concord Carlisle at Walsh Stadium next Saturday. Uh, the football team won thirty-five to seven in a, quite the blowout last Friday on our first, uh, dark game for once. And they will be playing, I believe it's Reading High School tomorrow at Reading. And...
Time it's been under the lights, the new scoreboard as well. Yeah, I, I think that's a good possibility.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, it's fine, it's good, yeah. Alright, and then the cheer team got first place at the D-two state's competition this weekend, or sorry, last weekend in Drake it. And that's all I've got for you for sports.
Great.
Uh, the high school's also been really busy among the lines of student leadership. Firstly, North End River did host the NEMAS Student Council Conference, which is the regional conference. And where schools across the northeastern Massachusetts come to do different leadership workshops and such. And North End River did very gratefully host that. And, um, along with Halloween, Student Council had a Halloween costume contest, tried to just encourage spirit in the high schools. And, uh, the class of twenty twenty-one in particular has had a lot of fundraisers these past few weeks, including a restaurant fundraiser at Pizza Factory. And they've also been selling beanies for the upcoming winter season, as well as doing a sort of flocking fundraiser. And where people can write down an address of like a friend's home and then they'll get flocked. And where a flock of plastic flamingos will be in their yard for a couple of days.
It's ten dollars for a flock.
Um, in addition to all of the student leadership and, uh, student council things that have been going on at the high school. Um, as a senior, we've been, the whole senior class has been very busy with like college deadlines over the last week or so. With, uh, November first being a very important date looming, um, over all of our heads. But, um, the guidance office has been very helpful in helping us through the college process. Uh, most seniors applied to at least some, um, early action schools or regular deci-, or early decision schools. Um, especially I know state schools are, uh, UMass, the UMass system is early action. So I know a lot of seniors took advantage of applying to those state schools. Um, additionally, uh, as Eamon talked about fall sports, that means that fall sports ending, winter sports are beginning. With, um, captains meeting with the teams after school to, um, go over schedules and organize, um, and just give information to the teammates about the fall sports season that's coming up. I know gymnastics has already had their meeting, indoor tracks is coming up, so ski teams. So, uh, falls, or fall sports ending and winter sports, uh, beginning is something that is going on at the high school as well. Um, additionally, uh, last Monday night, uh, Relay for Life had a fundraiser at Casablanca, uh, just down the street. And it was, uh, they counted all of the sales for the night toward Relay for Life. So that's an event that they work really hard to plan every year. It's going to be late in March this year. And it's a really great event with, for a really great cause that the high school is very involved in. Um, additionally, for seniors, the SOS committee has, um, started the push for high schoolers, or for seniors to, um, vote on our senior class song that will be like the theme of SOS this year. And they've sent out a survey to all the senior class that, uh, is available through a link in an email, to all the school emails of the seniors. And, um, students can vote, all the songs have the word night or nights in it. So that's the theme of SOS. Um, additionally, in that email, students must give their shirt size. So that way, the SOS committee can give each senior a shirt that actually fits them at SOS. Um, also today was Ms. Grass's last day. Uh, and student council and various staff members lined the hall as she entered. And it was a very, um, warm welcome for her that she's worked at the high school for so long. And it was a very, um, it was a very nice like thing, a nice gesture for the student body and staff to engage in, to thank her for all of her years at the high school. Um, also, Spanish club, today we visited the middle school and just worked with the Span-, with the Spanish students there in eighth grade. Talked about, um, just Spanish at the high school. And the French and German clubs will be doing the same thing next week.
And this is just part of the initiative by the honor societies to cultivate that love of language, which we've been talking about for the past couple of weeks at the younger levels.
On upcoming events, Shorts Fest is this weekend. It is a theater festival in which student directed one acts or performed throughout the weekend. And that will be Friday and Saturday, I believe, if I'm correct.
And then also next week is the seventh, eighth grade open house at the high school on November fourteenth. So this is a chance for any, um, students at the middle school, uh, or who are currently North End of a residence, who go to private middle school, to come check out the high school. Uh, students will be running, uh, tours of the high school for parents and families who are interested in what the student experience is like at the high school. Uh, additionally, all the sports teams and lots of activities will be present with, uh, tables set up in the cafeteria. Just giving information on, more information on student life at the high school. And there will be a presentation by the administration, by department heads, I believe, have a role in that presentation as well. And, um, there will be a student perspective. Uh, I believe Caitlin Westall, who's the student council president, will be speaking, um, to the crowd that comes that night and attesting to her high school experience and hopefully encouraging, uh, middle schoolers to enroll at the high school. Um, additionally, uh, lastly, the co-, the coffee house, the first coffee house of the year is scheduled for next Friday night on November fifteenth. Um, it's a really great show that's put on by the music department with pro-, with, uh, proceeds benefiting them. They do a great job running it, there will be food provided. Um, usually tickets are less expensive if you buy them ahead of time. So if you know a music department student, they'll be selling them ahead of time, but tickets are also sold at the door. Um, the one catch is if the football team wins, um, tomorrow, then they're going to move Coffee House to December third because they don't want to conflict with a football game that could happen next weekend. Because a lot of students would like to attend both events and to maximize profits. Um, they just might reschedule, but as of now, it's supposed to be November fifteenth and it may be moved to December third. Alright, that's all we have for tonight.
Well, it's next Friday, if the football team, um, doesn't win tomorrow night, what are the, uh, what's the time of it again?
Um, I believe it's usu-, it usually starts at six and concludes, yeah, it's six or six thirty, I'm not sure exactly, but... And then it usually concludes around nine or ten.
So we meet next week, so you'll be able to give us the official date?
Yeah, yeah, we will. I will not be present next week due to the, uh, eighth grade open house, but...
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Okay, you'll be evenly represented here, great.
Yeah.
Any questions from the committee?
I have a quick question, I saw it online, but I, I don't know if I wrote down the date, Wrestle Olympics?
Yes, so Wrestle Olympics, we were actually going to save until, um, next week because we had back-to-back.
We're trying to build suspense.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, it's so cool, I love it.
So Wrestle Olympics is scheduled for Friday, November twenty-second at six thirty. Um, and if you want to know more about that, I guess, yeah. But that's a great event that Best Buddies sponsors.
Did you have a question? Did you for the NSBA finals from your house on Sunday?
Yes.
I did too, yeah.
I was making leave and I...
It was exciting, it was exciting, I guess we finished up pretty well for the season.
Yes, they did a fantastic job. Yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you all.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great teamwork.
Nice meeting you.
Like that. We'll see you next week.
Okay, Dr. Gilligan, MSBA NAMS, by the numbers.
Okay.
Which would be great.
Um, I wanted to give you the update, uh, we have not heard yet, uh, from MSBA. Uh, as you know, we've had a few applications put in over the last couple of years. And with the initial one, we got some more information, uh, you know, in November or so. And we're still waiting to hear. Um, but just a little update because we do have some newer numbers. But for the folks at home, um, we wanted to really talk about, part of our strategic plan has been lowering elementary class size. Um, and one of the things that we'll be looking at with our revised strategic plan, uh, coming up is also staying at the middle school. And as you know, the middle school just, really, there's no space left. If you look, think about it, uh, North End of Middle School was built as the original high school in nineteen fifty-four. And although in the application, it talks a little bit about a seventh grade wing in sixty-eight, it was still the high school till nineteen seventy-two. Uh, but there was an addition, there was, uh, work done in sixty-eight. Um, ninety-eight, there was a major renovation, uh, in two thousand and eleven, the roof replacement as part of our green project. Um, but very large class size. Um, we have a really unbelievable rollout of our science program over the last few years in terms of curriculum. But some very dated science rooms, um, very, very dated. Um, you know, although we have a pretty exciting science curriculum at this time, the space is not conducive to what we want to do. Um, so as we look at the programming, um, you know, we want to have that robust place for science. Uh, additionally, as you know, and many of you have students at the middle school, uh, or have had them here on the committee. Uh, my son's in sixth grade there now. Uh, besides the gym, you know, the Blades Dell Performance Center has long now been a, uh, PE wellness, uh, physical activity area. So places for wellness and the configuration of the calf, um, really, it's not so efficient with the lunches. So there are some things that are laid out in the, in the, um, in the application that talk about the deficiencies. There's just really a lack of space. Um, and those who have been to the middle school know, uh, we've had, we've added some new programming, uh, really tight. But over the years, they've eliminated, for example, I think it was years back, the medically fragile, um, the different cohorts we've had, have been a challenge. If you go to the next slide, Jim. You know, currently, right now, our enrollment is at three eighty, three sixty-five, and three sixty-eight for our class average size of twenty-five, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Um, and you can see the related arts folks below. And the reason that I thought it was really important to talk about this tonight is, you know, as we move forward and we think about Facilities Master Plan Two, and I've been working very closely with Melissa Murphy Rodriguez, the town manager. Um, we have now looked at putting the middle school as part of, uh, the Facilities Master Plan Two in addition to the Franklin School, the Atkinson School, and the Kittredge School. Um, because, you know, at some point, we have to look at all mechanisms to really make a difference at our middle school. And you'll see some of the numbers coming up. So, uh, although I just showed you the numbers, this just came out, so it's always a little bit of a lag time. Um, but the, this is the newest information that came out from DESI. So as you know, in the application, it says we're twenty-four point five as a class average at the North End of Middle School. Um, this is where, how we compare as a middle school to all of the twenty schools that North End was kind of benchmarked against, um, over the years. I think it was Dr. Ormsby that picked these twenty schools a long time ago. And now we have ten comparable that are really comparable according to the DESI and the DART. But as you can see when you look at it, um, I mean, we are, uh, the highest and we're one of the lar-, have to be one of the largest middle schools, uh, in the Commonwealth, um, at that size. And if you just go back, you know, similar to where we were before, um, you know, that's the number that was used in the application. I really wanted to update you to say, we have the application and we're waiting word from MSBA. Um, and I think last year, uh, we talked quite a bit about, you know, having conversations about what are we going to do as we move forward. Um, and I think we need to look at it in two phases. One is, A, it's part of the Facilities Master Plan Two and as a community, what are we going to do to create better space at the middle school? Um, because we just don't have adequate space. And then number two, and, uh, you know, that's long-term. And in the short-term, I think we have to, you know, probably work as a committee and work, get a working group together to look at all possible options, um, you know, in the interim, um, so that we can best serve kids. Um, so we're anxiously awaiting on hearing from the MSBA. Um, and I know recently, I think, I saw one decision the other day, and it was slightly different than I've ever seen. Uh, a, a local town or city got approved for a feasibility study, um, but they didn't get the project approved. So they're going to pay for the feasibility study, uh, but not the project. And I hadn't, I hadn't seen that before, so, um, I know that, uh, we welcome our reps here tonight, uh, and, um, we'll certainly have them up. But the middle school is really that next challenge, is we've continued to lower class size at elementary. That is still a goal and we've made a significant dent. And working together with the town, I think that we can do something with our middle school. Oftentimes, people say, well, what are we going to do? You know, I want it to happen for my kid. I feel the same way, you know, my son's in sixth grade. Is my son going to see a new North End of Middle School? Probably not, but as President Kennedy once said, when's the best time to plant a tree? Today. Um, so, uh, that's really going forward.
Did he really say that?
No.
Yes.
He's not, he's not credited with that.
Okay.
Oh, he, he, he might have said it.
Might have tried to say it.
He's not credited with it.
I, I think he, I think it's one of his quotes, but...
John Applestein, born in Leamester, Mass.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
You can ask many questions.
Absolutely.
So that's a huge span, Dedham has fifteen kids per, uh, per class. Is there, do we, either we have a targeted number that we're going for at middle school? Or does the state have a recommended number? Um, I totally understand that when you put two or three more kids in a classroom, it really makes a huge difference for teachers. Um, we're out of space for, for a lot of reasons, but, um, you know, is there on, is, like, we had a, an elementary number that we were working towards.
I've never seen us with a target in seven years for the, the middle school that I can remember. It's always kind of stopped at the fifth grade.
You know, I think, as you know, I mean, if you said a decade ago that we would make progress towards those elementary class size changes, uh, people would really be surprised if we did. And the school committee working with town leaders and, and, and the leadership and vision of the administrators here have made that happen. Um, and would have those reductions. In terms of the middle school, it is, um, you know, we are just... We are, we are just extremely large. I mean, you just don't find middle schools... The size of North End of in many places. Um, you know, the one caveat I would say is Bev Zagari, who's a pro at finding all the data for us, so thank you Bev. She said, oh, Methuen's huge. And I said, oh, Bev, you got to understand, Methuen has, um, you know, they're K to eight, um, you know, so that throws it off. So we, we eliminated them from this. Um, the bottom line is, we, it's, we cannot lower class size at the middle school now because there's nowhere to put anybody.
Okay, but to work towards solution, do we have numbers that, if you look at this, there, there's a whole chunk of people at twenty-one.
Yep.
But then there are a whole bunch of people at eighteen. I mean, obviously, the smaller the better, but do we have anything we're working toward?
I think we need to be pretty aggressive about what that number is. I mean, I think if you look at the developments that are going into town, um, and we can say, you know, right now, they're projected, I think, six hundred apartments, uh, to be out there. But, uh, you know, that, that's today. I mean, who knows what that'll be in, um, you know, three, four years. And I, and I think most people know and recognize that, you know, this is not going to happen this summer. Um, you know, this is a multi-year kind of plan in consideration, even from a revenue perspective. Um, but, uh, I mean, w- we need, we need to probably figure out what that target is going to be. Um, and I, and I don't think that it's necessarily us just taking a, uh, a dart and throwing it at the wall and coming up with eighteen. I mean, I, I, I mean, eighteen would probably be, I mean, the teachers would be ecstatic, but, uh, um, I don't know if that's the right number either. But we, we need some guidance on that for sure.
Yeah, and I think that's something, you know, I've met with George and I, and George, uh, you know, was actually starting to look at where everyone exactly is, what, you know, when we... Physically. And what we talked about, um, you know, in the MSBA, uh, application of, you know, an area dedicated to science to free up those other classrooms, that would give us the ability to use that to create, you know, another team. Um, you know, take a three-person team to a four at one grade level, add another group, team at another grade level. And as you know, for those folks who have had kids in the middle school, in addition to the average class size, you know what they look like in the core academics, the related arts.
Huge.
Huge. You know, so, and when I earlier talked about the inadequate gym, I mean, that's often, that's a double class, has been forever in the gymnasium. But there's also a double class always typically happening in the Blaze, George Blades Dell Performance Art, Performing Arts Center, which is, hasn't been a performing arts center in at least...
Long time.
Long time, so...
Um, would you happen to know, when we did the renovation, I believe it was in override ninety-five or ninety-six, before it opened ninety-eight, did we, um, tell the voters what was built for, how many students it was built for? I, I've had this, this discussion with some former school community members and, you know, obviously, when I was there was like ages ago. But there was like, it was a nine hundred, you know, person building, student, student building. Now we're knocking on twelve hundred.
Yeah, so I, I, I asked George about that. I was curious about how many lockers they had. I don't know if that's indicative of how, what it was designed for. Um, it's been something that I have not been able to put my hands on. Um, some people have said that Stan Limpert, uh, may be a person that knows. He was the first person recommended and I, uh...
We could ask Phil, actually, Phil's probably there then.
And Diane Huster may, may have a sense. But we've had some moves. So the central office was on High Street, you know, then where we're at the old high school, the third high school. Then we're on High Street, then we're at Lucent and, you know, now we're here. I've even been over to the Atkinson basement where they keep several old documents, blueprints. I could, I could not find what it was designed for at the time. But certainly we can go back and look at what, how many students were there. DESI has all the data on what that is, so I'll find out what that is. But I think Stan was part of a big facilities master review. What year was that, Stan?
Two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight.
Okay, so it was late, I thought it was earlier than that, so, okay.
So one of the other things, I mean, we've got the Fields project that, you know, is hopefully going to move forward. I, I think is, at some point, we're going to have a little more information on. How close is it really the existing kind of parking lot that kind of locks us into the footprint that's there? I don't think we, what I'm asking is, we don't extend much beyond that, correct? Based on, I know we gave land back to the town for the purpose of the Fields.
Yep.
Maybe two, three years ago.
Yeah.
It's two, okay.
And I signed it over, I think, last year for the planning board purposes.
Okay.
You know, the idea of that wing is a concept. So, you know, if folks think that, you know, sometimes people say, oh, we've had a feasibility study, we've done soil samples, we've done all this. I mean, that was a concept, working with Andrew Mailer, the, you know, an architect that was working on the.
KBA.
KBA. So I would say that, you know, there, and I let Jim chime in. I mean, that, the concept was to the left of the building.
Right, more towards one twenty-five.
Off the calf.
Yeah, right. It's not, the fields as you see them now are what will be existing. So it's not, there won't be the possibility of going that way.
Right, right.
And the parking lot will be a little bit bigger, but that's, again, going away from the school, getting bigger.
Okay.
You know, and I, I mean, I think that looking at all the options, I wouldn't be surprised, and I'm not saying we'd recommend, but I'm, I'm sure people would say, oh, can we take a look at the courtyard? What does that look like? Can we take a look at, you know, a whole host of things? And one of the things that we'll look at too, it's nothing that we'll recommend, but in the short term, I think, just like with any plan, thinking about when the new high school was built, we, we looked at a lot of different options. You know, we'll look at, well, you know, increasing class size at the elementary. Do you consider, you know, different models? Do you consider, I remember, you know, and we would, you know, never advocate for this and I'm even hesitant to say it to someone to think that it's an idea that we'd want to pursue. But at one point, you know, someone said, oh, you know, one superintendent wanted to move eighth grade to the high school. You know, that wouldn't obviously be room. But I'm saying, we're going to have to look at all the options in the interim. And just so that we know what those are in the short term or over time, as well as look to really, I mean, we need to do something with that middle school. Any further question?
One, just one last one. So I would imagine that even if we did not have a class size issue, we do have the issue from just the science curriculum that we've been updating and changing. For a twenty-first century education, we don't have the appropriate space to do what we want to do, even if we didn't have class size issues, is that not true?
Very true.
So that factors in a lot to what we need to do, let alone the fact that it's like an opportunity to do both.
Yeah, and I, as you know, I mean, it's just, North Endover since that renovation, whenever it was in ninety-eight, has changed. So the reality is, federal mandates and by law, the things that we need to do in terms of education for EL students, special education students, has really changed. And in not, just in North Endover, but other places, you know, I remember, for example, when I, when I started at the Thompson, we had all sorts, every room was a classroom and there were lots of programming for all sorts of things in the hallway. So, you know, since that school was designed, I, I think it was probably more core academic classes versus the really, you know, a therapeutic special education program. You know, a tier-two program for students with a specific disability. Students who need English language support in services, so. As that's increased, the need for space has increased as well.
So we'll find out the next, next few weeks from MSBA about that. And I think that's a good transition to our next agenda. Get, get.
One last, so do you, you had mentioned kind of, might we be putting together some kind of a committee or a subgroup to look at this? Are we waiting for MSBA?
Well, I, I, I do think, you know, I, is last year, we said, this is something we have to have a conversation about as a community. It's something that I put in one of the quarterly, yeah, the quarterly tax bills, because my mom read it. And I think that it's something that, you know, parents have been talking about for quite some time. I think it was good to put on the agenda for tonight. I know it's something that Dr. Mealy and I have spoke with the new town manager about. It was something that we had spoke extensively with the previous town manager. I think even in the draft, there was a joint letter from both of us last time about the needs and how we didn't get it. And I think really, we have to have this discussion to explore all options and be really transparent about it and say, okay, what if MSBA doesn't come in? You know, do we continue to apply? Sure. But what are other mechanisms that we now look at? So you look at it in terms of a facilities master plan. And what are all the options that we look at in totality as a district and as a community about how we may get this done?
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we're going to hear from our representatives. So I'd welcome Representative Minikuchi and Representative Winn to come up and talk to us, what's going on on Beacon Hill? Obviously a lot going on with Ed reform, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm here, I'm representing Senator, Senator Carr.
Oh, yeah, sure, come on up. Great. Sit down, please. Sorry, I didn't recognize you there.
Oh, no, no problem.
So first of all, thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules. I'm sure you guys are running around all over the place. I know you're running around all, all over the place right now. And I know this is also coming to the, the end of the fall session. So on behalf of the school community, I really appreciate you guys taking the time to be here. So I don't know who wants to go first, maybe give a little update on what's going on Beacon Hill. Obviously we want to hear a little bit about education reform, what's going on with chapter seventy. So Christina or Tom, do you want to?
We also wanted to pass Senator DeZoglio's wishes on. She is actually being given an award right now down in Salisbury, so. Yeah, she was like, do you think I can make it too? I was like, well, you could try.
Well, I'm sure.
Because you know she would if she could, so.
I'm sure we'll pass along an invite to both Diana and Bruce if they want to come back at another time to personally address us. But I'm sure we'll get an update from the Senate anyways, so, so thank you.
Well, I mean, thanks for having us here. We're, I'm passing along, and I'm sure the senators passed along, some of the numbers that we have for North Andover. Wanted to make sure that you have it in front of you, of course, a lot of the numbers are projected. But we're really just so excited that this bill is so close to getting signed in. Of course, it's still in conference committee, but I don't think that there, the numbers will change significantly coming out of conference committee. But some of the things to highlight, of course, the addition of, of the coverage of health insurance for, for it to coincide with the GIC and also to cover the cost for retiree health insurance costs. We hopefully benefit the town. In addition to that, the expansion of circuit breaker. And to also include in transportation for special education would be really beneficial to the town. But I'm just really excited to be here as part of this delegation. As I'm sure you know, we're very much committed to public education. And it's really a thrilling time to be able to work on this together with my colleagues here.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I did have some conversations with Mr. Doctor Mealy this summer about the, some of the things that were going on. Because obviously, some of the changes that need to be made regarding education are impact, you know, gateway cities a little bit more than they impact places like North Andover. And some of those changes were actually going to negatively impact North Andover, especially with the circuit breaker piece. And so as you will be happy to know, Dr. Mealy was advocating for the transportation to be added, added in, which will allow North Andover's number to stay fairly similar and up a little bit. And, you know, as the face of the town changes, we, you know, if the population changes or this will be able to account for that so that we won't, we won't slide, I guess. We're going to stay the same and increase. One of the other things, speaking of MSBA, but the, but this actually includes an extra two hundred million to MSBA. So that might free up a little bit more. I know that's nothing when it comes to building a new school, but it could free up additional dollars for us also. So that's a positive. As far as where we stand with MSBA, I'm not quite sure, but we'll find out and let you know where we are in the, in the queue too, so.
And the senator apologizes for not being able to attend. His sister-in-law passed away last, last Friday. So tonight, he's just with, with family, preparing arrangements. They're going to be having a celebration of life for her tomorrow. So that's why he apologizes for not being able to attend in person. But he did, we did put together a little packet that, that we, that we passed, passed around. There's.
It's a little packet?
Bruce is very, very thorough.
We know the senator talking to me verbose sometimes.
But since he wasn't here, he asked me if I would read this.
I did also want to add, along with the reps, we do have a closeout sub-budget that is currently being negotiated, which is increasing special education reimbursement. We should be, if the numbers hold up, it should be about eighty-five, eighty-five percent or so that we'll be able to get to reimbursement for the FY nineteen fiscal year, depending, once the sub-budget passes. And then there's also additional money that, for school safety grants in that, in that, in that sub-budget as well. I don't know if you got, if you remember from last year, they, they developed a various grant programs for retrofitting doors and various other school safety measures. So that, so that grant program is being funded again in the, in the FY nineteen closeout supplemental budget. And kind of just not going through everything, but in this packet, we kind of wanted to highlight the, right, right now as the FY twenty budget has passed, North Andover got about a hundred and forty-three thousand, a hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-dollar increase in cha- in chapter seventy, about a fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and twelve-dollar increase in unrestricted, in unrestricted general government aid. And with the, with the edu- education funding bill that's currently in committee, this chart that we provided, that I passed out was what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had provided right before we started debate on the bill earlier, earlier this, earlier in October. So kind of, kind of going through what, with the bill when fully, when fully implemented in FY, in FY twenty-seven, you're, the chapter seventy-eight for Nor- for North, for North Andover would go from about nine, it would, in FY twenty, it's about nine point one-six million. In FY twenty-seven, it would, in FY twenty-one, it would go to about nine point seven, nine point seven million. I apologize, this graph should actually, it should actually say FY, FY twenty-seven. So, so you, you're able to see here just kind of like the increase as the bill, as the bill gets, as the bill gets fully, once the funding changes and the foundation formula gets, changes get fully implemented.
And on the sheet that.
Yep.
That Rep. Winn gave you is sort of in, in large print for people like me that need reading glasses.
Right.
That same, that same breakdown.
And just kind of going forward in this packet, there's just additional information about the DESI profile for North, for North Andover. And on page thirteen, the Senator Tar just wanted to, kind of wanted to illustrate, highlight a couple amendments that were adopted on the Senate side that he, along with other legislators, were able to get through, including tasking the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to provide an analysis of funding levels that reimburse municipalities and school districts for education services, including but not limited to reimbursements for regional school districts, but also costs associated with children and youth experiencing homelessness. And also special, special education costs as well. Because as the Foundation Budget Commission report stated, special education costs are, are one of the main driving, driving factors in the, in the increased cost for, for education. Something that we're trying to tackle in this, in this, in this bill and trying to make sure that funding for special education, education services is covered at, at, is covered at a reasonable amount and to be able to cover what's costing schoo- what's costing schools. On the next page, we just have, we included the summary of the Senate, Senate bill as provided by the Senate Ways and Means Committee. And then we also wanted to provide a section by section of the, of the House Education Bill. So you could be able to see the, the, kind of how each bill is laid out. As the reps mentioned, a lot of the broad strokes of the bills are fairly similar. What is going before, what's being currently debated right now in the conference committee surrounds language with regards to account, with, with regards to accountability and the power or, and the power that the Commissioner of DESI has with regards to targeted, targeted intervention. Where the Senate took the approach of not, of ta- initially, the Senate did have language allowing the Commissioner to be able to sign off on plant, on, on targeted intervention plans. But by, through amendment, that, that got removed and instead, and basically gave the Commissioner discretionary power as opposed to, so, as opposed to laying out that he, that he, that the Commissioner does have, does have the power to be able to essentially veto or, or ask for changes to targeted intervention plans.
And I think that that's really the big hang-up right now is that the House did not pass that amendment. And it kind of was overwhelmingly against that amendment. It was withdrawn. And so I think that's kind of the hang-up right now is that, you know, there are a number of communities that do not want their local boards to be the ones who are making decisions at a local level because they don't feel like they're necessarily qualified or it might add extra cost expense, et cetera. And so right now, that's, that's the one piece that's hanging up basically, this whole bill.
The, the conference committee, the conference committee did meet last week and it seemed to be fairly positive from everything that, that we heard. So it's really just, this and I think a few other kind of minor, minor details. But in terms of the broad strokes, it seems like both the House and Senate are, are, are in agreement. So we're hopefully, hoping that there's a finalized bill to the governor before we kind of go on break at the, in, on November twentieth, so.
I think one of the other pieces where North Andover was, you know, the funding levels changed slightly as they, they changed with the federal, the way that low-income or economically disadvantaged students were calculated. And so when that changed, North Andover was impacted slightly where the numbers went down. And they've, they've reinstated those. So if you're at a hundred and I think it's a hundred and eighty-five percent, a hundred and eighty-eight percent, you would be counted, of federal poverty level, you're going to be counted as an economically disadvantaged student, which is a little bit more accurate to reality versus the way that it had been altered before where you'd have to be on some, on some sort of a subsidy in order to be counted. That should change North Andover's numbers also.
The charter also includes charter school reimbursement too. So North Andover might be seeing a slight increase on that as well. And if, once it's fully implemented and after three years, we're looking at an increase of over twenty-three thousand dollars or would, would be an increase if we were to calculate based on the numbers today.
Piece on the economically disadvantaged, that's something we followed really closely.
Right.
When they went from free and reduced lunch, which we have large numbers of. And for us, we've fluctuated, hitting the, it's all based on the federal census.
That's right.
Not even the school population, the five percent threshold.
Right.
Which we were above, but a year ago, we were behind and we lost over two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Almost half our Title I budget. That said, the proposal for the economically disadvantaged.
Yeah, so it'd be a hundred and eighty-five percent of federal poverty level. That was one of the, so.
So you won't have to be.
That was one of the, so, right now, it's like one thirty-three.
Okay.
And so, in North Andover, it's, you know, a lot of people can't even afford to live here if they're at one thirty-three of federal poverty level, but one eighty-five is gonna change the, should change that number quite a bit.
Okay, because currently, you know, all districts across the Commonwealth, they saw the drop, because the only way to be considered economically disadvantaged is to receive some type of assistance, whether it's food stamps.
Yep.
Whether it's a subsidy for housing. So you saw even communities that were a hundred percent free and reduced lunch, go to sixty-five percent economically disadvantaged.
That's right. And I mean, and it hurts communities like North Andover in that count a little bit, but also there are even places like Fall River and Brockton that saw some, some funny things happen with their funding too, because of that. So I think the one eighty-five is, that was one of the big things that a lot of the gateway city communities especially were pushing for, because it helps, it helps the counts, because it's a little bit more reflective of reality, I guess, in a lot of our communities. So I think that will impact North Andover also.
Any questions for the committee?
Excellent explanation, because when you handed it out, I was like, whoa, I'm gonna have to think hard, but you guys really walked us through nicely.
There are some, I honestly, like huge props to the Education Committee. I mean, we're lucky, we got to walk into this session, and this was like a huge priority for me, you know, and for Trump, we're both, this was a big priority. And we walked in kind of right at the right time, because we weren't the only people that were sort of fed up with the way education was being handled. And I think we hit a tipping point of having just enough people that have been putting pressure on that this had to be a priority. And so the fact that it was taken up so quickly, and the summer was spent, and I was on the phone with you this summer, and the other three superintendents of the communities I represent, and this was just top priority, and people were working straight through August. And there was, you know, a working group on education that worked all through the summer, trying to make sure that this got done. And, I mean, I really like had my boxing gloves out, because I was like, there's no way that in this quick turnaround time, and just being the summer, that this is even gonna come out half this good. And the fact that basically every single recommendation that was asked for, all of those items were hit, plus additional concerns for communities like North Andover, where circuit breaker and transportation, you know, taking transportation out was a real, that could be a real problem for us. And it really took into consideration communities like North Andover that are kind of in the middle of the road, which could have, you know, this could have gone wrong for us. And I was prepared to have to fight for that, and it all came in, all four things plus. So, you know, I think this is a really solid bill, so I'm excited and hoping that we'll get over the finish line.
The finish line, and I know last session, they were close too. But the accountability piece, you know, sometimes when these bills come out, as someone who used to sit in that seat, we all get focused on the numbers so quickly. But as someone, as you know, Rep. Minicucci, representing the City of Lawrence, the accountability measures are really important. I think, I think we understand that a lot of the money, the new money, will be going to cities like Lawrence and Brockton and Fall River. And as, you know, someone who believes in public education, I can appreciate that and support that. The accountability piece, though, I think gives us a lot more comfort, or at least personally, gives me a lot more comfort to know that the dollars are gonna be spent appropriately, and that there are, you know, it hasn't been easy in Lawrence, as you know, as you're finding out as you go along. But I do think Lawrence Public Schools have come a long, a long way, and due to a lot of the work that former superintendent and now Commissioner Rowley did there, and all the teachers there as well. So I can, are you looking at? I don't know if you were trying to pipe in there or not.
Oh, no, no.
No, that's how you, so.
And I think that that was, you know, I think that was one of the biggest holdups with agreeing to that in the House budget, is that, you know, there were people representing communities, like, I mean, I represent Lawrence and April and Methuen, but, you know, representing cities across the state that, you know, didn't have this. I have a lot of faith in you guys, I'm not just saying that because I'm sitting here. But like, you know, we're lucky here in North Andover, we have a really solid administration, solid elected officials. And every community didn't have that same level of comfort with their elected officials. And so, you know, they said, what, when this happens, and we have to put this into the hands, they have the ability to, you know, push things through, maybe things are gonna happen in our community that don't, that aren't good for the kids, and there isn't somebody with an educational background who's making a decision if this is good or bad, or the right thing to do. And having it consolidated, I think, at a state level gives everybody a, you know, there's a better chance that there's going to be consistency across the state, so money's not going to waste.
And I think that this bill is a perfect example of how we want to continue to work with municipalities going forward, whether for this bill and other bills. The fact that the Education Committee and us talked to the local folks are the reason why this bill is just so solid and balanced. We got the feedback from the community, and we brought that all back to the Education Committee for them to be able to address the concerns about, you know, transportation, to make sure that that's added in. And what does increasing the foundation budget would look like for a calculation of circuit breaker example? For example, these are things that we hope that relationship would continue, and we want to hear from you, the concerns that you have for other bills going forward.
We have a lot that we want to accomplish. You heard of the middle school presentation. And I know, Christine, you have kids at the middle school, so you probably understand it better than almost anyone here.
Another one coming too.
Another one coming too.
Do you think it can be done in the next six months or so?
I don't know. I have two, your young constituents in Dr. Gilligan's office. Hopefully, in the next three or four years, they'll make it. But I just wanna say thank you. I know this is your first year there, but you, both of you have done a fantastic job. Bruce has been there, you know, since, you know, before Phil was born.
That's actually true.
We appreciate the effort of both Senator Tarr and Senator DeZoglio, and you folks. The money you guys got for the recreational complex, we're big supporters of that. Obviously, we just talked that we actually gave some of our land away for that project. So every dollar counts to getting that thing over the finish line, so. Anything we can do to support you, we're here for you.
Thank you.
We know you're looking off our interest on Beacon Hill, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry.
So I really appreciate you coming and kind of presenting all of this information here. I think it's really important for anybody who's kinda in the audience or just watching at home to kinda see this and another example for them to kinda hear from you. But more important than that, you know, you guys are something that the public doesn't see, you know, always kind of dropping us emails, like, this is what's going on, and this is, you know, a bill that was passed, and a status, and an update, and all of that stuff. And I usually try to respond back like, hey, thanks a lot, I really appreciate the update. But if I haven't, you know, said it publicly, I mean, just coming here is fantastic, but always kind of keeping us in the loop of things, because, you know, we all have lives, and we're traveling and working and all of that stuff, and so we may miss something. And I really appreciate, you know, you guys just taking an extra minute or so to kind of send it out, as I'm sure you do to your other communities as well, so thank you.
And there are two of your little constituents in Greg's office that wanna say hello to you.
I wanna say hi to them too.
Thank you very much. Don't give me no more candy. No more candy. All right, thank you. All right, moving on, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Gilligan.
Okay, just a couple of quick updates. And first and foremost, I wanted to just make everyone aware. I mean, I think you guys know how terrific Cheryl Bazak is, the Director of Nursing. Remarkable, and our nursing staff, remarkable with what they do. They come in with those visits, I think, who's on the Health Committee? Yep, they had a meeting, I think, the other day.
They did.
But really cool, I was at the high school the other day, you know, I knew this was happening, but I thought it was something to celebrate. Every single student in North Andover High School who's a ninth grader takes a CPR course through health, and they all get a certificate to be certified in CPR, just like anyone else would. And I thought that was really cool. They also have a program at NAMs, which is pretty remarkable. I know for years, even at the elementary, choking Charlie and those types of things. And it really was a lifesaver, one time, really a lifesaver at the Thompson School, where the students recognized someone was choking, because the nurses had taught them. And Amen's brother, actually, you know, was intervened by Ms. Kathy Lee, and she was recognized all over the news in the Celtics, et cetera. So these types of things are just pretty remarkable. I don't think they existed necessarily years ago. And it's a kudos to them that kids are learning how to be first responders and help out in times of trouble. Additionally, community programs, training going on. And all of our teams have incident response teams at schools that are all trained, but we open it up, and our coaches are trained, but we also open it up to additional staff as well. So really kudos to Cheryl, awesome program, and really cool to check out the other day. So, and I'm gonna turn it over to Lorene and Ms. Ando in a second. I just wanted to say that, as those guys mentioned, the play shorts, the student shorts, directed by five students. I had the nice opportunity to eat lunch at the high school the other day. The crispy chicken buffalo salad was delicious, and I had lunch with two kids. And that's going to be Friday night, I think at seven, and then Saturday is a matinee, so probably around two, and then seven again, and they were really excited about it. In addition to the time they had for Pat Grasses today, it was really cool that the whole staff came in early, the entire high school on Tuesday morning, and they had a little celebration for her in the cafeteria. She's been with us over twenty-one years, and she runs the scholarship day at the high school. And she is just one of the kindest human beings who always does what's best for kids, and we're really gonna miss her. I did call her today on her last day. I said that Bev and Cindy might be out tomorrow, and could she fill in? And she's not available, because today was her last day. And then just last but not least, or two last things quick. Tomorrow, we'll continue with our Civics in Action. I know that some of you know that we had a day with Mr. McGrave's eighth grade class, with Andrew Mailer came, you know, the new town manager as well. But tomorrow, we'll have, Rick Gorman's gonna be there, Trump will be there, Mark DeSalvo, and different folks. So that's going on tomorrow. And I was actually at the band concert, the band competition, Sunday night at 5:49 PM on North Parish Road in South Lawrence. And it was really cool to see the kids go off, they were terrific. And when I was leaving, BU and UMass Lowell were the last two to perform, and they were lined up all the way from the stadium, past the state pool into South Lawrence East. So it was a really cool event. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Marks. Just a quick update on instructional rounds. The PD calendar is really just informational, and then let's get Ms. Ando on, and she's been waiting patiently with you.
So we've been doing instructional rounds for a few years. Ooh, how's that? And typically, it's our leadership team, we invite our coaches, there are teachers, our facilitators of collaborative inquiry come at times. And usually, there's a problem of practice that's presented, and that's what we look at as we go through the classes. So we've been doing that, the same sort of thing for a few years. And given our strategic plan and our goal of education of all students, we talked about changing it up a little bit more this year. So this is, we had our first walkthrough this Monday, doing this. So what we did was create a series of scenarios regarding students who reflect not just the general sort of population, students who may be new to this country and learning English, students who may be experiencing some kind of loss at home. For example, dad just lost his job, and they're possibly gonna be homeless. Students who are anxious, what does it feel like in that class? So we had a variety of scenarios, and each person was given that scenario. And in addition to the, sort of the problem of practice that we looked at as we went through the walkthroughs, they also looked at that, those three classrooms that they went through, through the eyes of those students. And it was really, it was really interesting. I think people were very engaged with that. They do wanna do it again. So we will continue to do that as we look at how we are really serving all of our students in the district, in our classrooms.
Thank you. The professional development calendar, that's informational, and, you know, folks can click on it and check it out. And really terrific offerings.
Want me to say anything about it, or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so we started this a few years ago, too, where we started to offer summer PD. So we requested that any new staff, especially at the elementary level, where we had so much new curriculum coming in, that they come in and we provided professional development for them, explain the materials and resources we had, explain the teaching strategies that we were using. And that is, that has been very, very well attended by new teachers for the past, like, three or three years now, I think, we've done it. And then after that, we started to put together like a fall and a winter PD calendar. So it's after-school options for teachers across the district. And we have things in special ed, we have teaching and learning, we have literacy, we have math, we have science. And some of the things, like you can see right up here, these are some new classes. Disrupting inequity, starting to look at brave conversations around bias, which Ms. Ando is supporting. And then a data-wise facilitated course, which we're also offering during the day for some principal leaders, sort of really look at data more effectively in the district. So we're really expanding some of the options that we have as well. And a lot of those, we run the courses if we have a decent number of people. Many of these courses are running, a couple are not, so. And we will do this again for the winter, and then again in the summer, so.
It can almost be coming as long as the course of studies at the high school.
Yes, it is.
That's great.
And then Kristin is gonna talk a little bit about the coaching model that we're using with the K through two reading workshop. As you recall, we have rolled out the K through two reading units of study in our elementary and early childhood programs this year, so.
Hi, everybody. It's good to see you. I'm not talking about MCAS tonight, I'm talking about reading. Exactly. All this talk of weather, my freshman, who was a North Andover High graduate, freshman at Syracuse University, sent me a picture. It snowed for the first time today. So he started a long cold winter, Syracuse, this afternoon, so. Exactly, yes, yes, he was all excited. I'm like, I don't think you're gonna be excited for long, so. I'm here to talk about our K to two rollout. This is part of our larger five-year curriculum plan. We're currently in reading year two. And so we have integrated Teachers College units of study and reading in kindergarten, first and second grade. You ready? Thanks. Awesome. This is balanced with, all the research tells us that students need a balance of explicit phonics instruction paired with lots of time in text. So that's how we've designed our curriculum. Our phonics component is foundations, and then we're working with Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. It's out of Columbia University, based on a large amount of time spent reading, kids building a reading life, and teachers teaching short explicit lessons about comprehension, followed by a lot of practice in texts. Sure.
So I know, Helen, you were at one of the sessions where we talked about time spent reading and building a reading life. Our two literacy coaches on Monday held a session in the morning, and then another one in the evening, for parents to come in to talk about how to build that reading life at home, and the importance of the volume of books that you're reading, and what that does for you over time. And they actually had a little
Infographic?
Yeah, that they passed out, which I'm bringing home to my nephew over the holidays, make sure the little guys are reading. But it's really, it was really impressive, and they did a beautiful job, so. And I'm actually, I broached the subject with them about having that taped and put on KMTV, so that people who couldn't come to those sessions would be able to, would be able to see that, so. And I think they're in agreement.
Both the literacy one and the math one, and they were just really terrific. Really well-presented, lots of good information.
Yeah, we're very fortunate. We have some great people.
And I really appreciated, really, the thoughtfulness of having one in the morning and one at night. So it, you know, the same session that, you know, trying to meet people's needs and schedules, so.
And snacks.
The math did the same thing.
Gotta have snacks, right? Exactly. The Reader's Workshop, and Jim, if you just keep clicking, there's lots of components to the slide, but it starts with a mini lesson that the teacher teaches. Independent reading, which isn't like drop everything and read, sustain silent reading. There's a million things that happen during this independent reading, and you can just keep going, Jim, until they all light up. And so, as far as like, there's a mid-workshop teaching point conferences, there's different types of conferences, there's small groups, there's all sorts of things that happen during this time. So it's a very, it's a very complicated process, which is what's leading to our coaching cycles. So we have two literacy coaches that work with us in the district, and they have spent, oh, the next one would be great. Here they are, they were thrilled that I was taking pictures of them. But this is Ann and Jackie, our two literacy coaches that we're really lucky to have. And then we're doing coaching cycles where, so we have about forty-six teachers that are in K to two. Our coaches are doing a meeting prior to, an in-class coaching session, which may be a model lesson or co-teaching and a debrief. They do this in teams or with individual teachers, depending on the school and the situation. We have a hundred-plus class visits that they've done in the last eight weeks. I think that number is actually much closer to a hundred and forty. So coaches have been on the ground with teachers at least a hundred, for at least a hundred and forty sessions in the past eight weeks. And so we're also collecting lots of data sources, we're collecting how many visits they're in, but we're also collecting teacher feedback. And so, Jim, you'll go to the next one. This is just some examples of teacher feedback that we're, overall, we're finding that teachers are taking this coaching and feeling like they're much more effective with kids. And so I'll give you a minute to read that, and that's what we have. Do you have any questions for me?
That's great. Thank you.
Excellent.
I would just add, tremendous job. You know, a lot of folks don't realize that coaching, in a lot of communities, there are coaches, and not everyone's open to, and staffs, to opening up their practice, because you have another adult coming into your classroom and working with you. And I think that Foundation Uh, and I think that foundation of trust, we've built the instructional rounds and all those other components. Um, we've really worked hard, uh, to have people come in and have meaningful support for teachers. They have one of the hardest jobs, uh, in the world is teaching kids to read. It's the most important. Um, so I'm just really appreciative of the work, uh, that Loreen, Kristin, uh, the literacy, uh, coaches, uh, Jackie and Ann do. But more importantly, uh, I'm thankful that we have teachers in North Yonetta that are willing to open their practice. So.
It's a very vulnerable, it can be a vulnerable position to be in and, you know, so. But, um, yeah, even the best performers in the world have coaches. So, it's, it's exciting work.
Thank you, Kristin.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
And just.
Loreen.
Before we move on, one last thing, um, uh, Executive Director, Ms. Bacuzzi. God, do you just wanna tell them tonight what you had down at the library?
Today, unfortunately, they couldn't find another night, but tonight was the, um, APAC Open House. So, it started at six-thirty. So, we got down there for a little bit at the beginning for the setup. But, um, Courtney is doing a good, a, a great job. I mean, so, we're really trying to focus on, um, helping her just get the word out a little bit more, um, to get more, um, involvement from the parents in the community, which they could definitely use. I mean, the more people involved, the, the, the better structure that we have. So, but she's been fantastic. And the people around her that have been assisting her have been fantastic. And, um, you know, um, Maureen and such left them in good hands. So, they've been doing a great job.
Thank you, Marcy. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Chair's report. Before we get to the committee meeting dates, just a couple of quick announcements. Um, I think everyone got an invitation to participate in the Veterans Day Parade on Monday, ten o'clock kicking off down at, um, across the parking lot from the Town Hall in case of inclement weather, ten-thirty at the, uh, Middle School. Uh, and I also just wanna say, um, the, we had the, uh, the PTS Hall of Fame, uh, celebration, uh, last week? Yeah, last week. Uh, I thought it was the best one we've had in my five years we've been doing it. And, uh, I just wanted to obviously thank, uh, Greg Gilligan and Greg Lander for their work on that. But I especially wanna thank Ms. Picard. I thought you did a fantastic job with the Hall of Fame nominations. The presentations you made to both, uh, Tom McGowan and the, the family of, uh, Kathy Aminsky, uh, and whose husband Bill, you know, gave a, a heartwarming, very funny, funny speech. Um, it was just a real nice event. And the, uh, the, the, the job the principals did, please tell them, they did a fantastic job when they honored their teachers and gave a little background on it. It's just a nice, a nice touch. Um, I love that room, but I think we've outgrown it. I wanna stay there, but, uh, cause it's a really, you know, really pretty room. But I wonder if we need to move it to another location. But really Helen, I, I wanna say thank you publicly. You did a fantastic job with that.
Oh, it's just such a pleasure, I mean, to learn about these stories, about these amazing educators. Um, I, I'm sorry that I did not thank, um, Representative Minakuchi who sent in the, um,
All the proclamations.
Citation. Um, so I wish I had said that while she was here. But thank you, Christina, wherever you are.
Okay, now, this is always a fun time, fun event to pick out meeting dates. Um, now, January through June, as they're in the packet. Um, I know we're not gonna come to a final decision tonight cause one of our members is not here. But maybe amongst us, we can, is there anything you wanna point out to us right away that do not work?
I, I don't think I know of any so far that, that don't work. The only question that I had was, um, the week that we have town meeting, I think that's always a, uh, Tuesday. I don't remember, um, having a meeting after. I think we have had it before in case it was anything we needed to vote on. So, that would be the fourteenth. It's the only thing that kinda stuck out to me as, if we needed to vote on something.
I don't wanna doubt Ms. Zagari, but I'm, I, I still believe, I thought our, our town meeting was always the second Tuesday of May. This would be the third.
She was gonna, she was gonna look it up. We didn't find it on the town calendar.
Yeah.
Did somebody find it?
Huh?
Pretty sure it's correct, the nineteenth.
The nineteenth, yes.
I'm not sure my charter was always the second Tuesday.
I put it in my calendar already.
Yeah.
Before this.
I don't know what the chart is.
Okay. I don't wanna doubt Ms. Zagari.
I missed the chair. I do know that Ms. Zagari worked, uh, pretty extensively on these dates, checking them.
Yeah.
Um, so, Bev, if anything has changed, let us know tomorrow. But, um.
I just thought, again, I thought it was in the charter. So, go ahead, Ms. Maybell.
My, my only thing is I'd love to maybe have March fifth moved just because it's, um, it's kind of a big birthday for my senior in high school.
Oh.
Um, it's not the end of the world. I can work around it.
Which month?
March fifth.
March fifth.
Oh, okay.
So.
And since that's a back-to-back with February twenty-seventh, I thought maybe we can move the back-to-back to another week. Unless that caused problem. I mean, obviously, it's not a critical thing, but.
So, just, we'll, we'll figure out other dates.
March fifth, I'd love to move if we could.
We'd like to move March fifth. Okay. Um, we feel, feel pretty good about the whole budget, um, voting, the, the six gives enough, enough time. I know the finance committee member in the audience, plenty of time for Ted, Tim, Tim.
I do like what Ms. McDevitt said about having, once we find out where the town meeting really lands, having our last meeting closer to that if we have anything we need to.
I don't, I don't think we've had to make any changes. And, and we always, um, schedule a meeting on, you know, the nineteenth as well in case there is anything last minute. Um.
So, you would think have, uh, having a meeting on May, if, if May nineteenth is correct, um, you would, you would recommend having a meeting on May fourteenth instead? Is that your suggestion?
I'm not necessarily recommending. I'm just kinda commenting that it doesn't need to be that.
It's a little tricky because we meet April sixteenth. And then.
That's a huge gap, right?
May seventh, if we didn't meet until the fourteenth, that's a, that's a month-long gap.
No, I'm not saying getting rid of the seventh. I'm saying basically seven, fourteen, nineteen in May.
And then skip the twenty-first.
Yeah, get, get rid of twenty-first.
And possibly get rid of the twenty-first.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cause we have April vacation, the week of the.
That's a, that's a good suggestion.
Twenty, well, Monday is the twentieth.
There could be some, there could be some reason that we are not aware of right now, but I, I like the suggestion. Any objection to, to doing that if, uh, it works? So, get rid of the twenty-first and have a May fourteenth meeting? Okay, well, we'll, we'll look into that. Anything else that jumps out of, at these folks? I may reach out to Holly. Um, well, Holly will be here next week. So.
The only other thing may, uh, June fourth is, uh, if I remember correctly, traditionally scholarship night.
Right.
Uh, at the high school.
The, the night before graduation?
I, I think it's the night before.
That was the Wednesday.
There's something the night before. I think it's scholarship night or maybe it's a Wednesday. But we should, we should check with that cause that's a really, uh, important event in the community and, and it's just fantastic.
Actually, we had a meeting last June, right before graduation.
No, on scholarship night. I think scholarship night is Wednesday.
It's Wednesday night?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Okay, alright.
Wednesday night, scholarship night. Thursday daytime is awards day in the school in the morning.
That's right.
And then Friday's the graduation. But I will double check on it.
But it's just in the day on that Thursday?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it used to be on a Thursday night and then they changed it because it was a conflict for school committee to Wednesday.
I'm not sure they changed it for us.
Years ago, years ago.
I think the Madam Vice Chair said that there was an issue that we should look at at the calendar where we made that change.
A calendar?
Yes, the calendars.
Okay. Um, anything else besides Claudia's birthday? Claudia cannot, Claudia cannot babysit on. Okay. Alright, so we'll, uh, try to lock those down by next, uh, by next week and we'll obviously have Ms. Lynch with us then. Okay, uh, moving to old business. Second reading approval of capital improvement plan submitted. Uh, Dr. Mealy or?
Yeah, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Mealy.
Okay, it's, um, hasn't really changed much, uh, from last year. As we said, we did add, um, we did increase the district-wide paving based on, uh, what we experienced with costs, uh, with the first part of the high school that we did this past summer. And then we had added, um, doing some district-wide exterior maintenance slash renovation, um, at fifty thousand dollars per year. And these were based on conversations I had had with the, um, superintendent and the new town manager. Um, there will be some discussions. We're meeting next week, um, to discuss the CIP about the possibility of that fifty thousand, the new fifty thousand being included in, um, the facility manager, Steve Foster's, uh, budget. Because he has that responsibility of, um, the building maintenance, um, issues. So, it might make sense. We'll have those discussions, but, um, it doesn't change what we would ask you to approve, uh, for the school committee request of CIP for this year.
Any questions for Dr. Mealy?
No.
I thought you were teen sitting up there. Uh, could I have a motion to accept the, uh, capital improvement plan that's submitted?
So.
Moved by Ms. Picard.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Alright, that's a unanimous four-oh vote. Okay, new business. Um, we have a few trips here. Are these, um?
I see somebody in the audience who probably wants to speak to one of these if we wanna take them out of order.
Ms. Marks, would you like to introduce our guest? Which one? Yellowstone?
Yes.
C, all of the above.
So, um, this is Bennett Ahern, science teacher at the high school. And he was here before when, um, the trip to Yellowstone went first time. So, um, I know his compatriot is busy with some family business.
He is.
So, um, Bennett is here, um, alone today to just speak to this trip in case you had any questions.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
It's a pleasure to be here. So, this will be our fourth time going to Yellowstone and the Tetons. Um, not much has changed between the previous years. We're still doing it with the same organization. The timeframe is similar to what it has been in the past. It's gonna be about ten days between June twentieth and July second. Uh, the scientific, um, principles of study are remaining the same, generally speaking. There isn't so much that is changing from the past. Um, what we plan to be doing, arriving on the twentieth, we'll fly into Jackson Hole. Uh, we will be picked up by members of the Teton Science School and driven to their campus, um, in Jackson. Uh, we'll be spending the first five days there, uh, on their campus. Um, it's very comfortable lodging, bunk beds. You're fully catered to. All of your needs are met. Um, it's a very high quality of living while you're staying there. Um, while we will be staying there, we'll be venturing into the Tetons, um, and the surrounding areas to study topics such as the geology, natural history, ecology, uh, wildlife, um, river morphology. Um, and then we will be moving to the Yellowstone National Park to kind of experience the wonders that it also possesses. Um, and studying similar things is there as well.
Any additional questions around?
We're not gonna take a vote tonight, but, um, any questions or things they need to get back to us on?
I just have one question. I, I don't know why I didn't ask this in the past, but there are no requirements, any course prerequisites to sign up for this experience, right?
No. Nope.
But you do get course credit.
You do. Yeah. So, upon completion of the final project, um, and a grade, uh, the grade, I believe, does not count towards your GPA, but it does go on your academic transcript. And it does count for two and a half science credits, which is equal to what an elective at the high school would be. So.
That's great. Thank you.
You know, I, I would just give a boost to say that the two teachers who do this trip have extensive experience in that area. So, it's not just the Teton School that, um, that kids have an advantage of going with. Um, but both our teachers, um, really have a lot to offer.
Yeah.
You know, they're not just going on the trip. They're really, um, highly qualified to be going.
Thank you. Yeah, these are, these are my stomping grounds. My, I went to Montana State University, so this is kinda my backyard in a way.
Sounds like a great trip.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. So, it's, uh, for ninth to twelfth grade students, so I'm assuming that based upon the date, it's rising, um, it's a rising ninth graders, correct?
Correct. Yeah. So, we would be accepting any eighth graders currently as well as current, up to current juniors.
Okay. And then, um, I'm just curious, cause I have an eighth grader, how do you, how do you target this out to, to the eighth grade? Um, what's the?
So, our second trip, I believe, um, Shail Ramondo was one of our chaperones.
Okay.
Uh, we've worked closely with her in the past. She does make periodic announcements over the PA. Um, Craig Richards, a science teacher in the middle school, will also be our third chaperone this year.
Great.
So, we're trying to really kinda form a bridge between the middle school and the high school.
That's awesome.
To guarantee numbers as well as to, uh, we're planning in the future, with your permission of course, to, um, include other destinations of travel as well. I've been working closely with an organization in Costa Rica, for example, that is very similar to the Teton Science School, trying to kinda form a relationship with them. So, in the off-years, um, what we're trying to do is to train Craig to be able to kinda lead a middle school version of this trip. Hopefully, if it all works out. So.
That'd be excellent. That's really great. I think it's a fantastic trip and it's, it's beautiful country out there. So.
I wanna ask one question.
Yeah.
Do you, have you thought about offering any sort of preparatory hikes so that when the students get there, they're physically ready for the rigors of this trip?
Um, we had not, I, in the past, we had maybe thrown around an idea of having like a team-building activity where we hiked Ware Hill or some, something similar to that. That would be a fantastic idea. In the past, there have been times where we have been limited in what we've been able to do based upon the physical activity that students are able to kinda participate in. So.
And, and you may have students at very different levels.
We do. We make it very clear. We expect them to be in good physical condition. But of course, we're not going to reject somebody if they say that, you know, they have, for instance, we had a student who had a portion of his lung removed due to, you know, childhood cancer. We're not gonna turn a kid like that down. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very nice bow tie, Mr. Ahern.
I think he's jealous.
You know, you get a bunch. If you notice that he's worn the same bow tie twice in the same year.
Uh, my grandfather founded Bow Ties Limited of Vermont. When he passed, he left me every print they'd ever made. So, I have a hundred of them.
Oh, that's very cool. Pay attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bennett. Alright, does it, there's a couple more here?
Yep.
Ms. Marks, you want to speak to any of these?
Go to the first trip. It's the, um, foreign exchange trip to France, which I believe the foreign language departments have run before. So, this is, um, Chris Carroll submitted this, um, April ninth to April twenty-third, about ten to twenty students. Um, they would be hosted by families in France. And she has here, um, attached the itinerary for the days as well. So.
It's been going on for quite some time.
Yeah, this is not, this isn't something out of the norm.
They haven't had, the, we've had them come this way, I think, but we've not gone that way cause they haven't had the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, but in years past.
Yeah, oh, I think it's.
When I went down, when I, I went to France to track down Private Albert E. Thompson's grave, uh, and where he was buried in our east of Paris. And guess who I ran into at the airport? The, uh, our French folks coming home. So, it was kinda neat. So.
Um, so, one question that I have is, um, s- hold on. Um, I think I'm on the wrong page. Um, so, I just wanna be sure. I, I was actually. The refunds, um, I didn't see the refund, uh, kinda table. Usually there's a, you know, I'm gonna make it up, by this month, you're able to get funding back minus that. So, I, I, that would be great unless I'm missing it somewhere. I do apologize.
Yeah, I don't see. I just, I remember the comment which, yeah, just says they've always been flexible and cooperative. I can ask if there's a table, so we would, we would have that.
That would be great. I, I, I'm not saying anything, uh, negative about the trip. But I know in the past, um, we approved a trip, uh, I believe to France. And there were some, uh, events that, um, made parents very nervous. And I think that they came, they, they, they withdrew from the trip. They, they decided it was an unsafe, uh, venture for the students. And so, I just, that's one thing I just wanna be careful of. And, and I think if I remember correctly, they tried to replace it with a trip to Quebec or Montreal or something like that. And then I don't think they could get the right number of students to, to go. But, um, a, a, a refund type of schedule, similar to the payment schedule, I think, would, would just make me feel a little bit more comfortable. Um, or some updates in terms of language regarding, uh, international events and, um, warnings. Cause I, I actually think there may have been some State Department warnings.
There were, cause my niece in New York State was supposed to go to France too. And theirs was canceled. It was about three years ago.
Yeah.
And they did actually, they, well, New York State is a lot closer to Quebec as well, but they, they, that's where they went. Yeah.
You're a hundred percent right, Mr. McDevitt. And that's something I think we've monitored closely over the years. Um, and taking the advice from the State Department has particular warnings. Um, so, we can check. Absolutely.
I will follow up on that.
That'd be great. Uh, it, it's a great experience. I just wanna make sure financially our, our students are.
We think we'll have it by next, um, Thursday, so we can vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And then, um, the final trip is the trip to Washington, which occurs every year. So, um,
Nothing new there.
Mary Tracy submitted this. It would be March first through March third, hopefully without snow this year. There was a big snowstorm and they left last year for that.
Oh.
My daughter did that. They, they haven't gotten the bus at, yeah, one AM or something, but otherwise they wouldn't have gone at all. So.
Yeah. And it, it's for juniors. Um. Yeah, and it, it's for juniors, so. And this is, this trip runs every year.
Yep. Okay, any questions on this one? Standard? Okay, we'll probably prove that next week then. Thank you, Lorraine.
Okay, second crack at it, Mr. Lempert. Public comment. Wow, he's busting throat. We haven't seen him in a few months. Hey, I haven't, yeah, yeah, yeah. In topic of the bit, Stan Lempert, forty-five, forty-three Stone Cleve Road. I just wanted to echo your comments, Chair Terese, about the library event, and what a wonderful thing it's been for the library with all the activities that we've been doing jointly with the public schools. It's really been a boost for the library, and I think our staff there really appreciates it. You know, our, our director, Kathleen Keenan, has really gone out of her way to try to be accommodating and be helpful, and it's just been great to have all the wonderful events. You know, Brian Sheehy has been there and done some things, and we've got these wonderful exhibits now, and, you know, Ms. Marks has been very supportive of all the things we've been doing there. So it's been a real wonderful collaboration so far, and of course, I have to say, Dr. Gilligan, I was a little concerned when we changed horses here about, you know, are we gonna keep art, but it's been going great. You, you've just been very supportive of all of those activities, and we really appreciate it. And of course, you know, the library is all about literacy, so that's what we wanna help with. So we're so grateful that this partnership is working so well, and we appreciate it, because it's good for the library, too. It shows our benefit to the community by being able to collaborate on these sorts of events. The other thing, and so now, switch hats. As you may or may not know, through a long series of events, we finally, we, the North Antiva Historical Society, have now decided to renovate the so-called Carolyn Stevens Rogers Building, former location for the Museum of Printing, and turn it back into a combination museum and a place for maybe some community events. We've just started the renovation. It's just beginning to get underway, and we're gonna have a, an initial open house and kinda kickoff to that project this Sunday at the museum, two to four in the afternoon, and the weather's supposed to be good. No snow. So, if you wanna come down and just pop in and take a look around, there's gonna be, you can look at the, the building itself a little bit, if you wanna take a look and haven't, haven't, don't remember from having been there in some other, for some other event. And there's also gonna be information about the, both the, the project, the renovation project, and then some expectation of what we might think about doing with the building once we get it renovated. The schedule for that is maybe mid-year next year to have that finished, and, you know, in its sort of initial phase, and then we'll start seeing where we go. And it could be, we hope that, because it is, we, the Historical Society may not need all that space. It may provide some opportunities for other groups in town, such as school groups, to have another place where they can have activities or events or displays of, of, of history, like Mr. Sheehy is doing from the high school. So, it, it might be a good opportunity for a lot of us to do some things we haven't been able to do before. So I just wanted to let you know about that and invite you to join us on Sunday, light refreshments, blah, blah, blah. So please, come on down.
Thank you, Stan. Great to see you. Good to see you. Any other contestants today? Tim? Members, Ms. Mabley, or?
I, I was gonna, Ms. Picard said I was gonna say, is as my husband and I were raking our leaves on Sunday, we heard band music for hours, and I understand that they got a gold award, and I know that it progressed all throughout the, um, the fall, which made me also think of the fact that with all this triple E stuff, all the groups had to do, go through major changes. And I appreciate everybody's patience with that, because that threw a lot of things off, but everybody persevered and still got a chance to do other things, so appreciate that.
Thank you. Helen?
I just wanna give a couple highlights from the advisory, the Health Advisory Committee. One, I learned that, of course, you know, we revamped our policies around smoking to include vaping, and the high school has got a restorative justice initiative around education for vaping, so if a student is caught with a vape product, instead of going immediately to a three-day suspension, they have an opportunity to do an education component to, you know, lessen that, that suspension. So I think that's really great. We have a hundred percent immunization compliance, so that's due to the great work of our nursing staff and really helping people to get that done. And they do not see a lot of flu yet, but the flu clinic will be on Tuesday of next week from five to seven at the high school. So if you haven't gotten your flu shot, please go get it.
Thank you.
Andrew?
I don't think I have anything, so, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay. All right.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair?
Motion made by AM, seconded by AM. All those fairies say aye?
Aye.
Those know, the ayes have it.